Good evening. We welcome you all here. We call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. We note that we have six members of the council present. Councilwoman Karen Lang is excused tonight. Our opening ceremony tonight will be by Councilmember Dawn Christians.
Thank you, Mayor. As we every week almost repeat the Pledge of Allegiance, many times it gets to be a very rote thing. And I know, you know, I've worked for 25 years in the elementary schools, and so it became very rote for many of those students. I have a YouTube video that I found that Jake will play for us now. And following that, could we all please stand and pledge allegiance to our flag?
I remember a teacher that I had. Now, I only, I went through the seventh grade. I went through the seventh grade. And I left home when I was 10 years old because I was hungry. And I used to, this is true, I'd work in the summer, I'd go to school in winter. But I had this one teacher. It was the principal of the Harrison School in Vincent's, Indiana. To me, this was the greatest teacher, a real sage of my time anyhow. He had such wisdom. And we were all reciting the Pledge of Allegiance one day. And he walked over, this little teacher, Mr. Lasswell was his name. Mr. Lasswell is, uh... He says, "I have been listening to you boys and girls recite the Pledge of Allegiance all semesters, and it seems as though it's becoming monotonous to you. If I may, may I recite it and try to explain to you the meaning of each word? I, me, an individual, a committee of one, pledge, dedicate all of my worldly goods to give without self-pity, allegiance, my love and my devotion to the flag, our standard, oh glory, a symbol of freedom. Wherever she weighs, there's respect, because your loyalty has given her dignity that shouts freedom is everybody's job. United, that means that we have all come together. States, individual communities that have united into 48 great states, 48 individual communities with pride, dignity, and purpose, all divided with imaginary boundaries, yet united to a common purpose, and that's love for country. And to the republic, republic, a state in which sovereign power is invested in representative chosen by the people to govern. And government is the people, and it's from the people to the leaders, not from the leaders to the people, for which it stands. One nation, one nation, meaning so blessed by God, indivisible, impatible of being divided, with liberty, which is freedom, the right of power to live one's own life without threats, fear, or some sort of retaliation, and justice, the principle or qualities of dealing fairly with others, for all, for all, which means, boys and girls, it's as much your country as it is mine. And now, boys and girls, let me hear you recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Since I was a small boy, two states have been added to our country and two words have been added to the Pledge of Allegiance, under God. Wouldn't it be a pity if someone said, 'That is a prayer,' and that could be eliminated from schools too?
Would you please join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. No special recognitions tonight, one of those unusual times when there's no scout troop here. They must all got their merit badges, so. Next, we have approval of our minutes of September 27th. To the council then for a motion on the minutes.
Mayor, move for approval of the minutes of September 27th, 2016.
Second?
We have a motion and a second before us. Any discussion, or are they all right as they are? Looks like they are. So all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next, we go to a couple of recognitions that we are doing tonight. We have our Employee of the Month Award. And it is my opportunity... Got too many papers here on my desk. Didn't have them in order. It's my opportunity to recognize the Employee of the Month this October, Nancy Day from the Parks and Recreation Department. It looks like you brought backup with you, so anything I can say is out of line, even coming twist my arm, so. This was recommended by Kevin Astle, Jamie Young, Ken Burnham, and Chad George. And this is what they had to say. "It is well known that Nancy Day is a dedicated, detailed, focused, organized professional who loves her job and always gives it everything she has. Nothing is ever second rate. She is always all-in on any project. Nancy has worked for West Valley City for over 17 years and has never been Employee of the Month, which is unbelievable. She is a rock star. Recently, Nancy secured West Valley City as a stopping point for the Wall That Heels. The wall is a one-half side replica of the Vietnam War Memorial in Washington DC near the Lincoln Memorial. Many persons and families were affected by the Vietnam War and have had no opportunity to see the monument in the nation's capital. Nancy knew this and had a desire to bring it to West Valley, and she did in a big way. Nancy spent several months organizing and gathering information. She put together a comprehensive plan and strategy, making sure no detail would be passed over. One of the first items was to put together a team and committee to oversee each aspect of the project. Even at that, she would think through every aspect in depth and review them again and again. From the grand escort of police and patriot rider motorcycles, passing through a large part of the county, arriving at Centennial Park, through an entrance of an American flag hung from two ladder fire trucks from West Valley and South Salt Lake, to ensuring volunteers were actually fulfilling their four-hour assignments at the wall, Nancy was there, checking and double-checking. Coordinating the arrival of the wall, where to park the truck, where to set up tents, where to get power, getting enough help to set up the wall, ensuring there was security, preparing a program, decorating for a program, assembling the speakers, setting up chairs, getting the word out, assuring the press would cover it, getting volunteers signed up, providing volunteer shirts, keeping the volunteers happy, getting people to stay through the night as the wall was open 24 hours, providing sufficient parking, providing for those who couldn't easily move about on the grass, putting together a closing ceremony, assembling a crew to take down the wall and pack it up, final cleanup of the area. It was all planned in detail and came off beyond expectation. It impressed and touched the lives of many people. The crew traveling with the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall were impressed and want to use West Valley City as a model of how the whole event is to be handled. This event highlighted the heart, soul, and goodness of West Valley City. Additionally, Nancy is solely responsible for implementing a Veterans Day program for the city, the first of which was held in 2014. Nancy's commitment to the city and community is shown by her active participation on the RIS committee, the CDBG committee, the Westvest committee, countless Earth Day and Health and Safety Fair booths as hostess, Granger High Community Council implementing the Free Spark program, which is summertime play arts and rec for kids, and many others, too vast the list. Nancy is well respected by our subordinates, colleagues, and Parks and Recreation professionals alike. Nancy has been on the URPA, Utah Recreation and Park Association Board of Directors, several times, most recently elected as the president. She has presented numerous times at conferences and is always looked upon as a leader and mentor in the field of Parks and Recreation. For these and many other reasons, Nancy should be the Employee of the Month. Thank you.
Well, I'll just take a second. That's overwhelming. Thank you so much for everybody that wrote that. You know, it's amazing. It's something that I'm truly passionate about, not only our community, but my profession, and certainly the veterans for personal reasons as well as community reasons. And I really couldn't have pulled that off without the help of many, many departments within our city administration and just the cooperation and collaboration that we have together. So thank you very much. I truly appreciate this honor.
Thank you. Actually, I don't go and see everything that employees do, but I did manage to be there during much of, not all, of the, when the Wall That Heels came to the city. And just watching, it was like, it made me tired watching her because she just did so much all the time. I could just sit and watch, so it was something. And so this is one that personally I was able to see how much it was deserved. Thank you for being here with your husband and family. Appreciate you all coming and the support.
I see a lot of her staff members here too, so.
That's right. And it is true, a wise leader surrounds themselves with great employees. And they were helping out and participating as well. Appreciate you all being here and supporting her again tonight. With that, thank you. And we'll now go to the, by the way, I do have a copy of that if you want. Okay. I'm not going to lock it down, but you can get it afterwards or I'll listen to you. Next is our Division of the Quarter Award.
The Division of the Quarter Award goes this quarter to the Economic Development Division, and they were nominated by Nicole Cottle. The Economic Development Division of the Community and Economic Development Department is the gas in the city's engine. This division is responsible for maintaining and increasing the various revenue streams that allow the city to function. Additionally, they are responsible for maintaining and increasing employment opportunities, securing and assisting small business, development in the city's 17 redevelopment areas, and generally making the city look good to those outside of the city who are seeking to do business here. Recently, this division closed three substantial deals which will result in a net increase of over 3 million square feet of new development and 6,000 new jobs. Additionally, they meet with and assist over 100 existing businesses in the city each quarter. These visits result in retention of the healthy and substantial businesses that exist in the city. These successes are accomplished utilizing the unique relationships and talents that the members of this team possess. The members of this division represent so much more than just numbers. They are well-recognized members of their professions and are experts at facilitating what to others might seem impossible. West Valley City is well-known across the region as a city that knows how to do economic development. That is because of the exceptional talent and level of care exhibited by these team members. The continued help of the city is in good hands with Mark Nord, Jeff Jackson, Freya Johnson, and Jonathan Springmeyer. This is truly a dream team, and for that, I nominate the Economic Development Division of West Valley City. The members of this division can routinely be found at all hours of the day and night assisting economic development clients, entertaining potential business recruits, showing off the city, and touting the city to anyone who will listen. Because of the charismatic nature of each of these individuals, the true nature of West Valley City has become known to many outside of the city. The members of this division are essentially on the job 29 hours a day, 10 days a week, and their enthusiasm for the city can be seen and felt. Congratulations.
Yes, it's that point in time where they can be excused and off to other activities. Next on our agenda is our public comment period. This is limited in time. Individuals may speak up to five minutes, can't speak for less, and not to exceed 30 minutes in total. This is not a discussion. We just invite you to address your remarks into the microphone. You can pose questions. They will not be answered during your time. That's for you to ask and make your comments. And certainly discussion can be had afterwards or at other times. With that then, we'll open it up for public comments. First, we have Sheri Biesinger. Okay, if you would come forward.
This coming Saturday at 10 o'clock, you are dedicating skate park for us. I've been a longtime resident, over 52 years in the city, and I love it. 25 years ago, I was involved with the elementary schools very deeply with my daughter, and I saw that there was a lot of at-risk schools, low-income housing, people that were just at risk. And so I decided I needed to help them do my part, and I started a nonprofit, and it's called The Sharing Team and Sub4Santa. I help almost 2,000 needy residents every year with free things that they need if they need beds or clothing on Christmases, things like that. So I'm telling you these things because my heart is with those people that need. That's my passion. And I see that you fill a niche, you in front of me. Many of our precious residents cannot afford to go to the gym because it's going to cost them a couple hundred dollars for their family for one day. They can't even afford to get a membership at the West Valley City Center because that's going to be close to $400. Sometimes they can't afford those soccer teams or to be on the baseball team because that's $50. But guess what? Because of you, they can afford something very special. They can afford free skating at the new skating park. So I commend you, Mayor, city planner, and the city council for providing this free wonderful venue to our city, the city that I love, the second-largest city in Utah. And I would like to also give kudos and a great standing ovation to Josh, right back here. Many of you know he's dedicated 14, almost 15 years of his life, knowing that there was a niche, knowing that our city needed this wonderful, inexpensive, free venue with no admission for the children, the youth, the 50-year-old skaters, the 100-year-old skaters. We need this. And so the reason that I came up here is just to tell you thank you for what's happening this coming Saturday at 10 o'clock and to tell him thank you for dedicating 14 years of his life to this. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Josh, who signed up, Josh Sherman, for his opportunity to speak.
I did not bring a speech today, but I wanted to come and also thank you. I've known Sheri for the same amount of time, and I've come to these city council meetings for a very long time, before I knew really how to address the city council and before I knew how the public workings of cities work. And I've looked over budgets and I've done a lot of things to get to this point. I'm really excited in 100 hours, four days. This park will be open. I've been going there weekly, every week since May, when you gave the go-ahead to build it. And that next morning at 9:00 AM, they were moving dirt. And now, five months later, it'll be done. And this is just one puzzle piece to a problem that we have in West Valley, which I grew up in, that our risk youth need something to do with their time. So as the park opens and everyone's really, really, really excited about it across the valley, even visitors from other states and cities when they come because the word will get out, it'll be very popular. So as the popularity of the park diminishes through winter, we can ebb and flow and see how the park handles the traffic. But I appreciate the funding for the extra or additional parking. I appreciate Karen, and Steve, and Steve, and Tom, and the mayor, and Donald Lars, Corey Rushton, he used to be right there, Wayne, Kevin Astle, Jason, Kelly, everyone that's been out for the city and the park in Rex in general. They do a great job across the whole city. They beautify a lot of parks, and they work hard at what they do during the entire year, summer months and rainy and snowy winters. So I couldn't thank you. All the kids are going to enjoy this park. Thank you so much. And I'll be there on Saturday. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next we have Tom Peavy. Maybe he left. There was another name on here, but I think that one left too. It must have just gone away. So anyone else here for public comment? Seen none, we'll close the public comment period. We'll go to our city manager for any comments.
No comments tonight, sir. Good.
Okay. To the council for any comments?
I'd just like to make a comment to Josh and give him thanks for actually working with our staff and helping him create a park that I think is going to be first class. With his input and his knowledge of skate parks, I think we will have the finest park in the valley.
And I'd like to add to that too, Josh. You know, you did it the right way. You didn't just come and complain. You came and told us of a need, and you succeeded in gaining support. And that's the right way to make things happen in the park. I was a little bit wondering when I saw you here tonight if you were going to ask for a dog park or something else and we'd start all over again. But, you know, we consider that if you brought it to us. But we'll see you Saturday.
Councilman Christians?
Just had my congratulations too, Josh. You kept it in front of us, you kept it going. Thanks for doing that.
With that, I would say, anyone who believes that one individual cannot make a difference in government needs to look at this example. One person does make a significant difference in accomplishing things. And that perseverance, although it may have taken some time, has paid off abundantly. So if you don't mind, we'll probably, I'll probably use you as an example of how good things come to pass by one individual who is persistent. Thank you, and look forward to being there on Saturday, although I probably am not going to do much writing. With that then, we'll go on our agenda next to our public hearings. There are opportunities for individuals to speak during these public hearings. Our first one is on the quarterly opening or reopening of our budget for this current fiscal year 2016-2017. This will be to consider ordinance 16-45, which reflects those changes. And just to mention a few there, there are many reasons why we do this. This is based upon the budget that we have previously approved. For example, there are a number of items where rollovers from the prior year came into play. A project was started, funds committed, but not expended during the year, and those were rolled forward into this year to finish those up. For example, there are funds for road projects, for pipe replacement, boulevard widening, just a number of different things.
Skate park project.
And that's right. And then there are also grants that come in, and those grants usually have a narrow focus or restricted in their use. But the city applies for those and uses them within those confines. Most of them coming from the state, a couple of them from Homeland Security. Then there are many others, from road funds, Salt Lake County funds on the Cultural Celebration Center, you know, different projects. We have an ambulance purchase, public safety radio equipment that was set up. We have funds coming in from bonds that were approved. We have funds coming in from bonds that were approved, and so we put those into our budget and authorize them to be spent. So there are many different purposes here that come into play. Those will update our currently-approved budget. And so our purpose tonight is to vote on approving this or no. So I hereby open the public hearing on, and I got to jump back to the number again, ordinance 16-45, amending the budget of West Valley City. Are there anyone here, is there anyone here to speak to this issue? Seeing no one who desires to speak to this issue, the public hearing is now closed, and we'll bring this back to the Council before the Council.
Mayor move for approval of ordinance 16-45?
Second. We have a motion and a second. And for those who may be listening, this is not the first time the Council has reviewed this. We always hear it in two different Council meetings, a section that is our study meeting, and then here when we take final action. So if we don't ask too many questions or make too many comments, most of that is done in a previous meeting. Any further discussion? If not, then we'll turn to our City Recorder, as required by law, to take a roll call vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we go to application S-23-2016, filed by Mike Stewart, representing Oakwood Homes. This is final plan approval for what they're referring to as Phase 1A of a planned unit development. This is at 5680 West, 5345 South. This is a small additional piece. They're already working on Phase 2. This is an additional seven parcels of ground, and they made some changes to their original development agreement. Those changes were to increase the size of the apartments. They also added two car garages to all the units, all of them will have basements, and they reduced the number of units in order to put larger ones on the same amount of ground. Those are some of the changes that were taking place in order to meet market needs, and those were always happy for us to be able to accommodate those types of changes. With that introduction, then, we will open the public hearing on application S-23-2016, and when we consider it, it will reflect ordinance 16-46 on this issue before the Council. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? Boy, we have a talkative group, or else you're all here on something else. Seeing no other members of the public who wish to speak to this issue, we'll close the public hearing and bring the matter back and put it in front of the Council.
I have moved for approval, ordinance 16-46.
Second. Properly before us, any further discussion or comments on this? Seeing no further comment or discussion, we'll turn to our Recorder for the vote.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have a public hearing on application S-21-2016, filed by the city. This is requesting final subdivision approval for Fairborn Station, Phase 3 subdivision. This is at 2970 West, 3500 South. This is taking parcels of ground, creating a single parcel, which I guess they're calling Parcel A. Let's see, I was just going to see, I don't see the total acreage, but that's not critical. But this will take several lots, consolidating them into the one. And this one lot will then be available on the market. There's a number of changes taking place with this, including modification of utility easements because of putting together a number of pieces of ground. And also, within this, part of the road will be dedicated on that side of the property, where a new street will be placed in there. This parcel of ground will then form a future activity of this whole development, the plans which were put in place a number of years ago, and will create the next step in that process. And in order for that next step to take place, we needed to bring all those pieces of ground together. That is the introduction to this particular issue before us. This will also include ordinance 16-47, which is the way we will take an action on it. I hereby open the public hearing on application S-21-2016. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? Really is a quiet group. These are good things happening, and they're significant, although the public doesn't pay a lot of attention to them after the fact. When they're done, they notice them. It's like the skate park. Few people came to speak on it, most of the public didn't notice it, but when it's built, now it's built, they're noticing it, and they're excited about it. Same with this application before us. Seeing no public comment, I will close the public hearing. It is now closed, and the matter is back before the Council for action.
Mayor move for approval of ordinance 16-47?
Second. We have a motion and a second before us. Any further discussion from the Council? Seeing none, we'll turn to our City Recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next on our agenda are resolutions. We have one tonight, Resolution 16-164. This is to award a contract to B Jackson Construction for the 2320 South Jordan River Access Project. This particular project is for sidewalk, curb and gutter, a small piece, streetlights. It's a grant from the county to make access from the tracks line over toward the, I guess it's the Jordan Trails Park. And certainly appropriate to make it more accessible and better for the public to have access there. The contract is for, we're authorized up to $50,000. The specific contract for Jackson Construction is $37,676.20. I wonder what the 20 cents was for. Anyway, that is the issue before us, and with that introduction, we'll, there's no public hearing on this, so we just place it before the Council for their calm interaction.
Mayor move for approval of Resolution 16-164?
Second. Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our City Recorder for the vote.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have application number S-22-2016, filed by Ken Mellon, requesting final plat approval for the Newton Farm subdivision. This is at 3670 South, 6400 West. This particular project is approximately 27 acres. It will be 61 lots, about 2 and 1/4 units per acre. They range from 1,200 square feet, excuse me, 12,000 square feet to almost 22,000 square feet. The average is about 15,500 square feet per lot. This is a subdivision being developed under our new housing standards, one that we have looked forward to. We're excited about it. There are going to be a number of, there's several access points into this subdivision, excuse me, there's one, couple of them, but the overall development will be a significant addition to our city. It is being developed in conjunction with another development project, which will occur just to the south of it, and we're looking forward to this moving forward. With that introduction, we'll then place it before the Council for any calm interaction.
Mayor, this is, I think, an exciting time for the city, and I think we've waited a long time to have an upscale neighborhood in our community, and we're grateful to the Newton family for kind of a long and arduous path to this, but I think this is going to be the finest neighborhood in the city, and we're grateful for that. And with that, I will move for approval of application S-22-2016.
Second. Motion is properly before us. Any further comments?
Just like to say that I, you know, I'm very pleased to see this project coming forward and very excited to see it be developed, and thank you for bringing it.
Seeing no further comments, we'll turn to our City Recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That completes our scheduled agenda items. Any final comments before we finish our City Council meeting portion? See, I did remember. We've got a couple more things to do after this. Seeing none, then the final motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Our regular City Council meeting is now adjourned.
Called to order the regular meeting of the redevelopment agency. We've had an opening ceremony, and for the moment, all members are present except for Karen Lang and it looks like Tom Hune is still there as well. We have three sets of minutes on our agenda for approval, June 7, 2016, July 26, 2016, and September 13, 2016.
Chairman, move for approval of the three minutes that are on our agenda?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Minutes have been approved. Mr. Pyle, any communications or report today?
No, sir, thank you.
We have one item on our agenda, item number seven, which in previous discussion, we've learned we do not need to necessarily consider today except as a formality. Is that right?
Yes.
To the body.
Mr. Chair, I move that we delete this item from our agenda for no further consideration. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for a roll call vote on that item?
Yeah, we probably better, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christiansen?
Yes.
Mr. Northfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Bueller?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. We have no further business. A motion to adjourn will be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The vote was unanimous, we are adjourned.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Housing Authority. Note that we've had an opening ceremony, that all are present except for Karen Lang and Tom Hune, who are excused. We have four sets of minutes that are before us, and I put that to the Housing Authority.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the four sets of minutes before us. Second, the motion?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, the voting is unanimous. Mr. Pyle, do we have any communications or reports? No, sir, thanks. Will you please introduce the public hearing? Absolutely, thank you, sir. So this is an iteration of our quarterly budget openings that we conduct for all the city's fiscal entities, the General Fund, the Building Authority, the Redevelopment Agency, and the Housing Authority, which is, in this case, in this particular instance, we have one item that's considered for the budget opening. It's personnel 100 line changes. This is not an increase to the budget, this is simply a transfer amongst budgets.
Thank you. All right, we'll open the public hearing for this item. Is there anyone here to speak about this resolution? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn to the Housing Authority for action.
Mr. Chair, move for approval of Resolution 16-11, amending the budget.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we'll turn to our Secretary for our Roll Call.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christiansen?
Yes.
And Chairman Northfeld?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes our business. One final motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Called to order the regular meeting of the Building Authority. Note that we have had an opening ceremony and roll call, and all are here except for members Lang and Hune. We have, we're the slackers. We only have one set of minutes to approve, so we'll open that to the Authority. Mr. Chair, move for approval of the minutes of June 7, 2016.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Report from the Chief Executive Officer.
None, sir, thank you.
Okay. We have a public hearing scheduled tonight.
Yes, sir, thank you. We have another budget opening, as we discussed in the previous meeting. This one, what you lack, or what you lack in minute approval, you make up for in dollar amounts on your budget opening. There's five items, and these total somewhere in the neighborhood of $32, $34 million. All of these projects are associated with either refunding of previous debt for advantageous terms for interest rates, that sort of thing, or in one of the cases, it actually does provide new funding for construction for fire stations. None of these items are new, or approvals are new, it's simply the transfer of the funds to the appropriate budgets that will allow for the dispersal of them. It's probably worth pointing out, from a public record standpoint, that all these projects have been considered by the Council and the Housing Authority, Building Authority Board in previous meetings.
Thank you. I now open the public hearing for the reopening of the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget. Hearing no clamor for being heard, we'll close the public hearing and move to the Council on consideration of Resolution 1606. Move to the Authority, excuse me.
Chairman, move for approval of Resolution 1606.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, would you please take our vote?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Northfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Christiansen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes our business. One final, final resolution.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.